Go ahead and call the meeting to order. If you would, please rise. If you would, please bow your head. Father, thank you for this season, and Father, we thank you for the chance to get together with family, and Father, we thank you for the true reason for our this Christmas season, is your son. And Father, we just pray for all of the citizens to be safe on the highways. Father, we've had way too many deaths. Father, we just pray for wisdom and that you would be with us during this meeting. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. This time, council member Graff will lead us into place.
You would join me, please.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now to the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. Let's allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Give me the seat. There are no proclamations or order presentations tonight, so we will move to the consent agenda.
I move that we remove items G through T and discuss those individually.
Here we have a motion to remove G through T. Do we have a second? Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
The vote is four to one. Those are removed. Now we need a motion to approve the remaining agenda on the consent agenda. So do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion in second. All in favor of the address of consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item G, consider authorizing the abandonment portion of Lover's Lane. Mr. Long.
Thank you, Mayor. As the council is very well aware, we have had this particular matter before us a few times now, and it basically involves clearing up what has developed as a problem over in one of our districts in as far as the dedication of property to allow for the construction by an adjacent property owner of some of the city's property and yet allow the city the ability to maintain its proper drainage and the right-of-way for our trash collection. Basically, it is off of Lee Street, and it has gone. Mr. Uranga, who is the adjacent property owner, is wishing to develop this, has agreed to pay for the money necessary to replant it, and we would recommend that the council approve.
Okay. Are there any questions from council? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
There's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item I, consider ordinance annexing into the city Odessa approximately 206.53 acres. Mr. Long.
What happened to each?
Mayor, what happened to each?
That's at this age.
You said aye.
Oh, I apologize.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, the council, I believe, has seen this particular item for the fifth time, and it is basically the areas that have requested voluntary annexation. The first is a 206-acre tract that is owned by the Hertz and is to be purchased by Beaton Bow, and it is for development into residential district. The second is a 4.4-acre tract of land which is being developed along Fodre Road, and it is to allow for some retail development that is immediately adjacent to Fodre Road. The third particular area is a street right-of-way that currently belongs in the county and which is to be transformed into city right-of-way so that it can service the CVS pharmacy that is planning on building there.
Okay. Are there any questions from council? If not, I'll entertain a motion. No, it's not a public area. So, do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item I through T. Ms. Shaw.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. If it's okay with you guys, I'll kind of discuss these as a group, as opposed to individually. But the first item I have, I will single out because it's the raising of our building permit fees. About a year ago, when we went from the 2006 to 2012 codes, we mentioned that we would be going to 2018 codes in one year and raising our fees. So this is a, the first increase in our fees since at least the mid-'90s that I can find, and this will bring us in line with the other cities around us as to what we're charging for permit fees. It also changes our fee language to match some changes that the legislature passed last year, or this last session, so that we can continue charging for some of the fees that we do. So it's a little bit of cleanup and a little bit of a change on those items. The next items are updating all of our codes: fuel, gas, mechanical, electrical, energy code, plumbing code, residential code, and international building code. And it's also going to be adopting a new one which is called the Existing Building Code, and it's updating our Minimum Property Standards Code, which we all recently adopted. It's taken us from the 2012 code to the 2018 code. We are skipping 2015 in order to get in line, but we did go from '06 to '12 to kind of close the gap, and now we're going from '12 to '18, and we'll be in line with the rest of, basically, the nation when we do this. Some of the other items are listed a little bit differently. They're cleanup as far as adopting fees and penalties for some of those things. The only one that stands out out of this is item S, and that's a change to our noise ordinance, and it allows the city manager to make exceptions to our existing noise ordinance in extreme or emergency cases. So that's those in a nutshell, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer that for you.
What's the reason why we haven't been aligned with the nation, as you put it?
We've been behind. It's International Code Council. The codes are nationwide, and we got significantly behind. We stayed on 2006 when we should have been going to '09, '12, '15. So we've been playing catch-up for the last couple of years. I was not over the department. I can't speak to that.
After we vote on this, when will these go into effect, and when will penalties start to begin?
Okay. They'll go into effect, I think, 30 days from your second reading, but then there's a six-month grace period. So August, maybe, I guess, around, whatever, six months from that, June, July, August, around that area. So if you have something on the drawing board or something in the queue that's already on the 2012 codes, we're going to accept that for six months. So we've put it out to the Builders Council. We've done an email blast to all of our contacts. We will hold an open forum as well, so everybody's aware. And then, like I said, there's six months for everybody to kind of transition.
Great. Any other questions? Okay. If not, can we get some other motions?
Is that good?
Motion in a second. Any discussion? If there are none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Next, go under Other Council Actions. Purchase Panasonic laptops to replace the Motorola NDTs in approximately six police and bar vehicles. Mr. Parrish.
As I said, this is for purchase of about 60 failing computers. This was brought about with the upgrade from our public safety software, Motorola. The computers that are currently in there are outdated and they're failing. We would replace those and also get up to speed with the software that we're installing. The cost is going to go around to $331,475. It's down from $483. The difference in cost came from a change in the Panasonic laptops that we're buying and also a lower number of computers that we're installing.
Okay. Any questions from council? If not, Mr. --
Is there a way to donate the old laptops to, you know, smaller communities or to schools or to, you know, people that use them, or they become obsolete?
They are obsolete. They're no longer being serviced or used or produced by a Motorola company. That's one of the reasons why we are replacing them.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
So there's a way to auction?
Yeah. I don't know how to answer that question, so.
Mr. Graff, they probably would go and auction, but just as surplus material, they procure.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
In a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Next, we move under bid award. Consider bid award of university right-of-way clearance and utility relocation project. Mr. Feldman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This bid award is for the university right-of-way clearance phase. As part of university, we were originally thinking we would go from design into roadway construction. As it's matured over the last two and a half years, we thought it would be more prudent and easier to build the final roadway product if we went in with an intermediate project of clearing the right-of-way. This is going to involve relocating walls, fences, trees, fire hydrants, driveways, the pump station near the YMCA park, utility poles. This project is also going to install the bases and the conduit necessary for the streetlighting for the final roadway project. On November 28th, we opened bids for the project. Two companies submitted bids. The lowest responsive bidder was Onyx General Contractors for the amount of $2,135,195. Kim Lee Horn, the design consultant and city staff, recommend awarding it to Onyx General Contractors.
Okay. Are there any questions from council?
I would just follow into our budget.
I'm glad you mentioned that. So we've been looking at the budget, and with this project making it easier for the final roadway contractor so he doesn't have so many obstacles, we're still in line with the budget we've been telling you, including the design, right-of-way acquisition, and construction.
For bottom dollar, we're still at the same place we were?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Can I mention one more thing on this, on the university topic, is we are scheduling another public meeting, January 22nd, 2018, next month, at OC, 6:00 PM. It's the public meeting to make people aware of construction. So we're, I'm trying to get the word out for that.
Have we finished purchasing all of the property?
I am glad you mentioned that also. In fact, today, we acquired the last easement necessary for this project. So yes.
Good job. Good job.
So that means no eminent domain was required for this project.
Good job. Great job.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from council? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item three, consider purchase of new emergency vehicle preemption equipment. And please explain what that is.
I knew you were going to say that. So this bid award is for emergency vehicle preemption equipment. What that is, is the fire units, fire trucks, ambulances. They have equipment on their units that when they approach a traffic signal, it alerts a traffic signal that they're coming, turns the signal green for them, red for everybody else, and it makes the progression of the fire units easier to go through the intersection and through town. What we're currently using, and we're currently using equipment, but it's 40-year-old technology. It's basically line of sight. Fire truck, signal, if it sees one another, it's communicating. What we're going to is a smarter GPS-based system. So instead of line of sight, it can see around corners, trees, other obstacles. So it knows, the signal, when I say it, the signal knows when the emergency equipment apparatus is approaching it, and it does its cycle. We looked at two companies. We chose one in the amount of $270,000. This project is, I've got it planned out as a five-year upgrade project. This was a supplemental budget request that council approved, in the amount of $274,000. So we're a little under budget for this project. And FIRE and Public Works has been working on this project.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, can we get one of those things? Already been asked.
I think we all will, but I've been, people out there will want to do it.
Probably so.
No more questions? I'll entertain a motion. So moved. Motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Feldman. Next, number ordinances. Consider calling in and ordering a special election on May 5th, 2018. Mr. Long.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The proposed ordinance would provide that the city of Odessa add an additional council member position to be voted on at large, and would title the mayor to vote on all matters considered by the council.
Okay. We do have one citizen who would like to speak, Mr. Art Leal. It's 12:06, I can't reach her.
12:06, Alameda.
And you do have three minutes, Mr. Leal.
Okay. All right. I'll do my best here. All right. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak today. My name is Art Leal. Like, as you mentioned, 12:06, Alameda. I'm here representing just as a citizen of District 5, but also as past chairman of Udonos Anida, who was very involved in the 2010 census, and also the author of the Department of Justice complaint on redistricting. So one of the, I just, I want to make some, some points on how this looks like. And it's not just me. It's lots of people in the community that see this. A lot of people in the community see this as an attempt to offset what is called the so-called block of three council members, that this will offset their vote. So it looks bad. It looks bad trying to offset these three council members' vote by establishing an at-large, which is going definitely to favor the northeast side and definitely hurt the south district and the west and District 3 as well, because we all know our voter participation. I did this for 10 years trying to increase voter participation and get people to vote, and we all know that people don't vote. But just because they don't vote doesn't mean they don't deserve representation. And I don't think that this, that doing an at-large position is going to help in that fair representation. We used to have an at-large position a while back ago. I remember it. I was in the '70s. My dad ran for it. He lost. But I think we eliminated this in the late '80s. I don't know the exact year when the at-large position. But it was eliminated, if I remember correctly, because, because the demographics on how the city was growing. Okay? We all know what happened in 2010. We had to add more to District 5, non-Hispanics of District 5, just so we can get a good balance. So that's, the growth is still going to happen, so you're going to start, you're still going to see District 1, District 3, District 5. You're going to still can see it growing, and, and we're going to continuously have this discussion when redistricting comes around. And, and I certainly would, I believe that everyone deserves fair representation. One thing I want to mention as well, my apologies, my phone chimed out there. I think I've mentioned all my points. I guess I, what I want, what I want to say is, council, council people, please take this into consideration. 2020 is coming up soon when we do redistricting again. I will be involved as well, and I certainly would not have, want to write another letter to the Department of Justice because we don't have fair representation in this city. I think an at-large position will only, will only hurt District 1, District 3, District 5, and I think the reason behind this is simply just to offset a so-called block that a lot of people believe exists within the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leal.
I'd like to comment if I could.
Sure.
What we're asking to do is take this to the public, the public's interest to vote on. This is not something that we as a councilmen make a law of where it might be. Just all of the intent is, is to bring it to a vote, to bring on the ballot for May 2018, that we do have an at-large and we do have, allow the mayor to vote. That's it. But it's decided by the voters of this county.
Can I respond? Can I respond to that?
Sure.
And I understand, I understand completely, Mr. Bryant, where you're coming from on that, but we all, we know how Odessa votes. We have low voter turnout, and we know how May elections are. That's why the elections were moved to November, that we have even lesser turnout in a May election. Now, you're going to have a certain amount of people that are going to vote in that May election, and I can tell you right now, it's not going to be our poor districts. It's not going to be District 5, it's not going to be District 3, and it's not going to be District 5. So it will pass. If you put this out there to vote, it's going to pass, but it's not going to pass by the people that it's going to hurt.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Leal. Other comments?
Yes, I would like to make a comment on that on this, because when this was originally brought up, it was a discussion type, and something to be open-minded. I think as city council members, we have to listen to the public, and we have to listen to the ideas that might be passed through our desk, and we have to give it due diligence. And I, and I think I'm doing that, but I think we're rushing that. I don't think that this is something that we need to do right now because I'm still researching it. I have asked from the Elections Office for some information. I have talked to several cities that have done this. Other cities make it work. Why not Odessa? But at the end of the day, I'm not saying that I would go for it or not, but right now, I don't think the time is, is right. I, I think we need to give it more time. We need to make sure that it is something that is for the benefit of the entire city of Odessa. So that's my comment on that, and I don't know if anybody else has anything to say.
Yes, I do. I'd like to read a letter. "The attempt to bring an at-large or at-large elections and seats to Odessa is yet another ploy by the so-called elite of this city to grab power, to further exploit their ambitions to develop where they please, and is an attempt to exercise Jim Crow-style voting practices and tactics that have been outlawed in this great United States. It's time for us to move forward, and for us to, or the few who are trying to bring this about, tells you exactly that they are upset simply because we have individual minds here to vote for all of Odessa and not just for their special interests. This gerrymandering attempts and practices have historically disenfranchised minority communities and reestablishes their agenda of oppression, power-grabbing, and intimidation. These actions brought a few due to a council that has challenged the status quo, who sees the misdevelopment, the lopsided development, unequal, unfair treatment of certain communities while other communities and districts receive special and privileged treatment. These few are attempting to use all taxpayers' dollars to develop their specific areas and do not have the entire community's best interests at heart, and it is apparent, seeing is believing." So I think we all can say, if we were to take a trip just eight blocks away from here, we see that there has been neglect, and that starts at the top. If we travel west, we'll see that there has been neglect again. That starts at the top, and I think we took a step to stop this by dismissing the city manager and bringing about another center, a city manager who we feel has the best interests of Odessa at heart. And now there is the dismissal of Larry. Not saying that Larry does not have the best interests of Odessa at heart, but sometimes change is necessary and change is good. And this is, I'm not finished. Thank you. Historically, at-large voting has weighed heavily against minorities and had given absolute power to majority political groups and have diluted the vote of the minorities, something that Mr. Leal just spoke about. We, the council, have a sworn duty to uphold the interests of all citizens of Odessa, not special groups, areas, or specific people. The political elites interference within the council, within the city government, and interaction with former higher-up city employees has risen to the level of criminal and unethical behavior. Those same individuals have attempted to influence and bribe city council members with favors, promises of becoming the next mayor, and have attempted to influence individuals in recanting prior votes or actions, and now are behind an attempt to create an at-large district in an attempt to circumvent a political democratic process that apparently worked for them in their selfish best interests for years. Yet, now the status quo has been disrupted, they have become disgruntled. It is, it is only now, when the days of rubber stamping their agenda and projects, that they wish to change something that they see as being broken. It is only now, after they are dissatisfied with the dismissal of their cohorts, or when the council is making an honest and real attempt to diversify our economy and free our city of being a hostage to a one-ended-side economy, that there is a problem, that there is a need for change, that the cry, that they now cry and say the system is broken, that they now cry and say the swamps needs to be drained. If it does, if this swamp needs to be drained, then truly they are the swamp creators and the creatures within the swamp, and disguise and pawn themselves off to the public as gentlemen and Christian, God-fearing men. If anything, the council has attempted to equalize, reverse, and change the status quo that has left many other districts without, that has left neighborhoods in peril without proper economic and fair housing development amongst some, some of the needed things. They are trying, these people are trying to reestablish a system that takes all taxpayers' dollars of our great city and incentivizes their special interests. It is a wonder that the federal government, as Mr. Leal just made mention of, the federal government, the marshals, the state attorneys general, has not come in here and upended this immoral, unethical tactics, and I pray they shall soon to save our great city. I urge these individuals to cease with these threats, the hostility, and harassing climate and evil actions. We, the council, are about fairness for all citizens, not just special interests. We are here for fairness of all businesses and anyone who want the best for this city. I, and I think I can speak for some of my other council people, hopefully, I will keep fighting for the city of Odessa and District 1. We, the council, were elected to serve the people, not your special interests or groups. No one owns the current city council members, nor the city council seats. They are not for sale, and you will not and cannot threaten, intimidate, bully, or scare us whatsoever. What is popular is not always what is right, and y'all, and your agenda is not right, nor does it has any fairness, equality, nor brotherly loved intentions. It's self-centered, narcissistic, racist, bigoted, and oppressive in every word of it. Stop trying to circumvent democracy because you can no longer have your way, like spoiled children wanting their way now. Thank you.
Mr. Bryant?
If I may add, two things. Number one, I think the largest economic development that's happening in the city of Odessa is happening with District 4.
And what is that doing?
That is the hotel motel. That is the Hotel Motel Convention Center.
Where no one resides, where the city benefits, but the community does not benefit whatsoever. You're speaking about a business that will benefit. The citizens of District 1 cannot live in those hotel rooms, can they?
I'd like to make one thing.
Can they?
I would like to make economic impact of the city of Odessa creates other things besides a motel, hotel. Otherwise, we would not have investors that stepped up to do that. Second thing I'd like to point out is that this is brought on the agenda today because we do live in a great country, in a democratic country, that allows the voters to decide what they want. It's not me, it's not the five up here.
Allows a few to dictate what being placed on the agenda.
It allows, it allows the voters of our great city of Odessa to voice their opinion, which is a great, great honoring thing that we have in the United States. That's all it was put on the agenda for. What we have to do tonight is to vote for that item, one or another. No way am I persuading anybody else. I just want it up for our city to vote for.
Okay, other comments?
Yeah, let's talk about the at-large position. I believe that the city had this in the past. I asked a former council member, I said, "Didn't you have the at-large before?" "Oh, yeah, we did." I said, "Well, if it was, you know, good and all, why did you do away with it?" "We had to. It was discrimination, and we were ordered to do away with it." "If it was discrimination then, it's discrimination now." Now, we've had a lot of problems in our community with discrimination. Our school district. The last one was the county. You may not be aware, but back in 2005, the Attorney General of the United States of America sued the county commissioners, the county sued each one of us commissioners individually. It's kind of a scary thing, folks. They also told us that we were responsible to oversee every single election in this community. The school district, the city, the hospital, the local college, everything. And we're going, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, wait, 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 wait a minute. We have no control over that. Doesn't matter." You see to it. If we have one at-large position, I have to agree with you, Malcolm. It will come from District 2. Mayor, if we give you the permission to vote, you live where?
District 2.
District 2. They complained about us having a voter block, which we did not have a voter block. I would never do a voter block. Those of you who know me, I'm a pretty strong-willed woman. I'm going to do my thing, my way. It would create a permanent voter block, which is certainly not what I would be proud of in my community, and I don't think you would either.
And other communities will continue to be deprived of equal development as well. I'm sorry, Ms. Grant.
That's okay. All right, you mentioned about the census in 2020. In case you are not aware, we are obligated, we have to, and it's also in our charter, that when the census results come out, then we will have hired a person that will be used by the city, the county, the hospital, the college, and the school district to go through and see where the income is in the different areas, to see the jobs, to see the education, to look at the whole picture of this city. And at that time, we will either add people to, make more districts, or change the boundaries, but we will be doing that. What we have right now are no facts, no figures, nothing. We have blind information.
No consensus.
All it is, is a few people want to have an at-large person. You don't do things that way. You do things the right way.
Which, thank God, is voting by the public.
Voting by the public.
Any questions? Okay, question has been called.
Well, maybe we're not ready for the question.
Then that's your practice to talk.
Okay, thank you. Whether we need to do something or not, I don't know. Maybe we need more people. We've had a lot of growth. I can guess where I think the growth is. Each one of you out there can guess where you think the growth is, where you think the economy is. But until we do a census, we have no idea. We just are guessing. Again, we're blind. I don't see what the rush is. I do know that what I think the rush is, if we go ahead and vote on this tonight, then the public doesn't even have to go out and get signatures. We put it on the ballot, and we're saying it's a good thing to do, then let's go for it. Your plan has changed over and over. When I was first told about the plan, oh, it was going to be two at-large members. Then I heard it was going to be one at-large members. Then I heard it was going to be at-large and the mayor. What is your plan?
Are you looking at me or are you looking at the public?
I don't know.
I brought this to the agenda of our city council because I was asked by public people to bring it up. So if it addresses me, please address the whole public and city that are out there.
Tell me what the people that asked you to put it on here, what is their plan?
It was exactly as agreed, to look at it, one at-large, and let the mayor vote. That was what was looked at. And it was put it onto agenda for us to exercise our wonderful right we have to vote as citizens of this United States.
Now, if we have an at-large person, we'll be sued. You know that. So willing to...
Well, I know I was elected at-large.
You are at large.
No, at Odessa College. Odessa College has two at-large.
I called a question.
Okay, we have a question called. Do we have a motion?
I'm going to approve. I don't have to present it on the agenda.
Okay, move to second.
Second.
Have a motion in the second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. Okay, vote is two to three. Go stand. Next, under Resolutions, we need a motion to remove from the table sale of portion lot 1, block 6, grant addition.
So moved.
Have a motion in the second. All in favor of bringing it back on the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Get it back on the table. Consider approval of sale of portion of lot 1, block 6, grant addition to the adjacent property owner. Mr. Long?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Council, a few things. This looks familiar. Here it is. This is the original ordinance that we had conveyed, the roadway for Buckle Ridge and the street roadway. This was some additional land that the city held that was not roadway. But in order to make everything flush, we were going to go ahead and convey this property to the adjacent property owner also. And so this is merely that property being conveyed.
Okay. Do we have any questions for Mr. Long? If not, we need a motion? Need a motion for a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. You may proceed. Next, considered use of certain city-owned downtown properties appropriation of funds necessary to either remove or renovation. Mr. Phil?
Good evening, Council. Mr. Mayor. Agenda item four is to consider three properties downtown. One is 700 North Texas. This is the former Scott Theater. 417 North Grant and 418 North Grant. Here's an aerial shot of that location for 700 North Grant. I'm sorry, 700 North Texas. It's a corner of 8th, I'm sorry, 7th in Texas. We have recommended that we remove this structure. We have had a declaration by the building official that this is an unsafe structure and that the building is unsalvageable. It's in very, very poor condition. It is full of asbestos, it's full of staining water. Birds and rodents have made their home in this structure. It's a building you cannot enter in without a breathing apparatus. It's a very unsafe structure. With that, we'd like to request that we remove this structure, and with that, we would donate the sign to the Odessa Arts Council for preservation and utilizing it at another location to keep that, to keep that sign. The total cost to abate and have the proper air monitoring for this structure would be $365,000.
Council, I would like to mention on this particular address, within the last few days, someone has expressed an interest in the property. However, my recommendation to you is that we proceed with this. If something else develops with that other opportunity, we'll certainly bring it back to you. Rainey, you want the sign?
Yes.
Okay.
Philip, do they have a plan to rid of the rodents and everything else before they demolish?
Yes, sir. Before the building is demolished, all of the mold and asbestos will be removed. And in that process, they will have a cleanup inside, so they have to drain the water. And hopefully through that process, we'll be able to get the rodents out. Now the birds there, they'll be a little harder to get. But hopefully, once work starts in there, they'll be able to start moving out.
Well, let's keep the rodents in there and don't let them go out. It's the city, okay?
Yes, ma'am. The next structure is 418 North Grant. This is the former Head Start Building. It's the white building that's on the screen that you have in front of you there. An aerial of here is the building that's highlighted in red. It's between 4th and 5th Street on Grant. This building is recommended to white-box this building. By white-box, I have an illustration of what that would look like. This would be a building that's ready for development. An individual could, or a business could step into this place and customize it for their individual needs, whether it be retail, an eatery, office space. They would have that ability to step in and do that. This building is still in pretty decent shape. It does have a few areas of asbestos in it, but it's in the floor. And if it's his redeveloped, we can encapsulate that with new flooring. And the roof aspects of the building are still in good shape. So it would be $150,000 to white-box this structure. This next image is just a rendering of what an updated location would look like here, whether it be retail, eatery, in that area.
We tear it down first, correct, Philip? That's the...
No, sir. This building would remain, this building would just be, all of the walls would be stripped out, plumbing, everything.
No leaky dream, anything like that.
No, sir.
Do we be good and bring it back to a very base scale up?
Okay.
AC about to go, Bryant?
Any purchaser of this, are they required to come up to code as far as handicap, for the handicap? Because I saw those stairs and whatnot are very narrow.
This is an example of what it would be. This is not the actual structure itself. Now, there are stairs in the facility. We would bring it up to code as it relates to the building, mechanical, electrical. It would be whoever buys the structure and whatever the uses are.
So they're responsible?
Yes, sir, for the... Yes, sir.
Okay. The next one?
The next one is 417 North Grant. This is the old furniture store that is on Grant. And this is also between 4th and 5th Street on Grant, and is right across from the Head Start Building. Similar to the Scott Theater, this building is also in very poor shape. It is in between two existing businesses downtown, the Rose Building and the Jim's Big and Tall Shop. Due to the condition of the building, they've experienced some water damage due to our structure. The roof has come in. There is a lot of black mold that's located in this. So with this agenda item, we're leaving a decision, or seeking a decision from council on how we proceed with the structure, whether it be abating the asbestos and white-boxing it, similar to the Head Start Building, or demolishing the building and starting over at that location. In order to white-box this building, taking out the asbestos, the mold, bringing it back up to code, would be $366,300. And then there's an example of the white box. There's another example. It would just be an open shell for anyone to develop as they see fit. The other option that is there is to do the demolish of the structure, and that would be $55,125. I know council has presented concerns. If we knock out this structure and we just have a hole in the street, what would happen there? I found some ideas and other projects that have happened in other cities. This structure that's here in the middle is what's called an infill building. It was a building that was built after the fact. This is, of course, a computer rendering, but there are possibilities to bring buildings back into those areas. Another one here is this white building just to the left of the GNC. It was a building that was torn out and another building put back into place. There is also the option of creating some type of green space, also an eatery. This is in Memphis, Tennessee. This is a beer garden that was created. It's decorative. They have lights seating that someone may be able to utilize there. This next one is also in Memphis. They have pulled a lot of these structures out, and they create spaces for use there. This next one is that same exact structure at night. They have a movie screen. They can have different events there. So with that, it would be either the removal at $55,125 or the remodel at $366,000. I'm sorry. 100, I'm sorry, $366,300.
Could you repeat that again?
$366,300 to remodel, bring it to code. For removal is $55,125.
Mike, what do you recommend us? Would it be a period that maybe we tear down it for a few days or weeks and see if it'll sell, and then possibly move it together?
Well, what we wanted to present with this is two options, Dewey. And if you're asking me for a recommendation, I'm not sure what that is because I think there are benefits to both. Certainly, having an existing structure that is ready for someone to come in and establish a business is ideal because anybody going into that building will have those same costs. Obviously, we would try to recoup the citizens' money back from any sale. The other is, if we tear down the building, you run the possibility of it being blanked for some time and no one coming in. However, you could establish some of the things that Philip has shown us, just like this one, and really kind of provide that outdoor kind of environment that the master plan calls for. That sort of open space that the master plan calls for.
Would we do a juncture of both? That we tear it down, wait a period of maybe 30 to 60 days to see if there is any interest? If not, then build, or we can approve it that way?
Well, if we tear it down, in this case, Mr. Bryant, we would take the entire structure down. So there would be no walls left. It would be Jim's Big and Tall and Mel's building, and nothing in between.
We wouldn't have the option to build anything because there's nothing there.
Okay. I know this is your only decision, gentlemen, it's fairly easy.
I mean, I feel like we have a better chance if we white-box it because it's easier for somebody to go in and just make some changes here and there than come in and see nothing there. I think we'd have a parter time selling property versus something that actually they can ready move in, in my opinion.
Mike, what do you think?
Oh, I'm kind of torn between the two of them. I almost think spend that kind of money in hopes that we'd sell it when there is some big things we can do with it in there. And it's pretty cool stuff you can do in that area. I would almost kind of be leaning towards not spending. More rather sticking to $55,000, just tear it down, maybe put something in there that we can use.
I'd like to get that. We got to tear it, I mean, we got problems right now.
Yes, sir. We have to just...
We got to do something. We got to do something.
Correct.
Yes, sir. Mayor, can I amend you? Or add just something to consider? If we didn't have the momentum of the downtown, of the hotel and the convention that we're doing, I would agree with you that, you know, $55,000 makes a lot more sense than the other. But I think with the momentum that we have and what we're doing downtown and the revitalization, I think it makes sense to move forward with that.
I...
Yeah, I think.
Well, I agree with Mike. I think we should tear it down. I mean, it's just, you know, it's not being used as is, and it could provide an opportunity... I mean, it's just, you know, it's not being used as is, and it could provide an opportunity for the next developer to come in and get very creative and build in the, what's the word, the ambiance of this, uh, hotel. And goes right along with the hotel instead of an outdated building that's right, basically close in proximity to a new building structure. So I, I, I agree that we should just, I agree with Mike that we should demolish this thing.
You know, excuse me.
Yes, you, you're sure?
Uh, well, I was passed over, so. Uh, how many of you have been through cities and smaller towns and you see the hole there where a building was? I, I personally don't think we're gonna find anybody that's wanted to, want to come here and take that area and put in a new building. Uh, we're looking for companies to come in. I think if we have this building fixed up, ha- as a white box, they've got something to start with. And I think we can sell it, we could put our money. Uh, I know you guys say, "Oh, well, save money, fifty-five thousand, save money, save money, don't spend that." You know, you have to spend money in order to make money. And, yeah, we can tear it down for fifty-five thousand, and I'll almost guarantee you it's always gonna be a new space there.
But what if it never sells, Ms. Grant? What if it never sells? What if we put this money in that and all of a sudden it never sells, so it sits on the market for it?
Then you know what?
Upteen, whatever.
We put something in, we, as a city, can put something else in there.
Why not let someone come in and just be creative, forward-thinking instead of-
But they can be creative with white boxes.
They can be creative with a blank space. This is blank canvas, it's kind of like an artist having a blank canvas.
I just don't think it's gonna happen. I really don't. I've seen too many cities that just have this blank space.
I, I think we, as Odessa, we need to be more forward-thinking and innovative in our, our future development, and it starts, of course, with the hotel. Uh, but I think that, that hotel needs some support, uh, some, uh, some structures that basically reflect its updated, um, presence, so to speak. No disrespect to you, Ms. Grant.
No, we just have to disagree.
Yes, ma'am.
I kind of like what we're seeing right now. You know, I kind of like that opportunity. The one where you think you're, you're downtown Odessa, it'd be kind of nice to have an opportunity to look at a restaurant out there.
They're right, I love being humble.
Now, no matter what you say, we're not all gonna agree with you.
Hey, that's okay, because I'm gonna kind of agree with, I'm gonna kind of agree with both sides. You know, I look at the financial aspect, that's, that's one of the first things that I look at, because I want to be responsible, you know, with tax pay dollars. But I also look at what we have to complement the, the hotel convention center, and thank you for bringing that up. But I also look at, you know, the open space as well. I look at the downtown master plan, I look at the fact that we do need to have open space. I also look at what's been plotted and what's been suggested that we put on that block, and we're looking at retail restaurant. I'm not knocking out space, so I'm, I'm, I'm kind of at that spot of also kind of looking at, looking at both directions. I'm sorry. So that, that's where I stand, to be honest with you. I could go either direction and I'll make either way work.
How successful have we been in recruiting a, a, uh, restaurant, retail restaurant?
There are some different things in the works at the moment. I'm looking at a bunch of different options, to be honest with you. Nothing, I'm not sure, a couple of things if I can speak on, and I know I've-
Right, I don't want you to speak on things that are, but are they, is there an interest?
Yes, there is.
Is there a strong interest or a possible interest?
There is. And I think the best way to answer your question, too, is I get phone calls all the time. There's a lot of interest, and I've noticed, asking for buildings, they want to bring businesses downtown. Where can they, where can they buy, what's available? And, and literally, when we look at what's listed for sale or lease, that list is very short, so we're looking at a lot of empty buildings. We're looking at the vacant lands, but people are asking.
Why are they not being filled in if they're vacant? Why, I mean, they're asking.
People are not listing them for sale. So those are some of the things that we're working on also. You want to get the calls, we find the buildings, and we go. Um, this building, again, the interest is there, it's just matching the right person to the right space.
If you, if you were in my seat, what would you vote?
I'm gonna have to hot bill this situation.
I'm asking your expertise, sir. If you were in my position, what would you vote?
I would vote demo.
Well, I think-
You're welcome.
As a business owner, how many square feet is this?
This structure is about five thousand. Just move it here, I'm sorry. It is, you've got it over here, sorry.
Fifty-one?
It is, uh, five thousand, one hundred and forty-three square feet.
But if we're gonna take this and invest three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, that's your base price, and I come in and buy it as a business owner, then I'm gonna have to turn around and invest two hundred thousand dollars more to make it a restaurant. It would be cheaper for me to buy that land and build what I want accordingly, because they're gonna fix, I'm stuck on it because we have to get our money back as a city. And that building is not set up for a restaurant. Uh, you're gonna have to cut that concrete you're gonna have to run, you know? And that's why I think-
Some port walls for the-
Your walls, you know, you know, you could go in with metal and then make it look like whatever you want.
Because that's-
You know, that's what we're holding there, so.
Mayor, in your observation, um, we also aren't including our acquisition costs for this building either.
Yeah. Okay, well, first two, I don't know, everybody good with those two?
Yes.
We need a motion for that.
We need, we need a motion for the first one.
Uh, somebody?
Uh, second.
Motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So first two are passed. The third one, do you want a motion?
I think a motion that we demo, Bill.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Have a second. Uh, all in favor of demoing, please say aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
The vote is four to one. Okay. Next, uh, item six, consider the use of certain city-owned downtown properties and appropriation of funds necessary. Nope, apologize, that same one, sure. Item seven, consider award of bid of sale of city property. Phil?
Counsel, Mr. Mayor, this agenda item is for the sale of property. This is a property that we released bids for. It is located between the seven thousand, seven hundred block of West County Road and Goldern. Uh, there is an adjacent property of about twelve acres that we recently sold. This property was given to the city in nineteen forty-eight, and it was identified for industrial development and also for water. Uh, the city has, uh, has looked at this property and found that we, uh, can use it for industrial use or can be used for industrial use, and with that, with the bids we received, we received two for the property, for nine point four acres. Uh, one bid was, um, was approved, uh, we did receive a bid of thirty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty cents, and they also did provide the bid bond check as, as requested in the specs. The other bidder did not provide the minimum bid or the bid bond check, so their bond, uh, excuse me, the bid was, uh, rejected. Uh, with this, the city would retain, uh, all of the, uh, access to the water on the property or water rights to the property, and the owner has a hundred and twenty days to work out an industrial district contract with the city for the property, and it is recommended for sale.
Any questions?
Is there an oil well on that property?
Excuse me, if there is an oil well on the property?
And I don't suppose we have mineral rights here?
No, ma'am.
Didn't think so.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Have a capacity, unanimously. Next move to miscellaneous. Ms. Ramallo?
For the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, reappoint Lori White and Larry Brown. For the Public Art Committee, reappoint Dick Galam and Yorvon Heimiken, and appoint Toby O. For the, oh, that's, that's all we have.
That's it.